Good morning. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, September 11th. I'd like to ask Madam Clerk to please call the roll.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Morse.
Here.
Merchant. DeBoer.
Here.
Hildenbrand.
Here.
Steck.
Here.
Vice Chair Burrow.
Here.
Commissioners Coleman. Halsted.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Sparks. McLeod. Oliver King. Legrand.
Here.
Womack. Faber. Pakla.
Here.
Morales. Boujack. Chair Green.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have fif- fif- sixteen members present, five absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move into our special order of business for this morning. There are a couple of small changes to the agenda for the ceremonial thing, so if you can bear with us on that. So on behalf of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, I want to thank you all for joining us today. As we meet to conduct our business this morning, we find it necessary and proper to pause to remember and honor the nearly 3,000 lives lost 24 years ago this morning on Tuesday, September 11th, 2001. Today, we also honor the courage of the first responders, the men and women in uniform, and the countless Americans who stood together on one of the darkest days in our nation's history. This memorial service is an opportunity for us to reflect, to give thanks, and to renew our commitment to the values that unite us as a community and as a country. As we begin, I ask you to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I've asked that you remain standing and come to attention for the presentation of the colors by Kent County Sheriff's Honor Guard. And accompanying the procession is Tom Bradley of the Grand Rapids Police Pipe Band. Please remain standing for the duration of the colors and the processional. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Commissioner Legrand to lead us in the invocation.
I'm going to open with a prayer called "Lead Us." The author is unknown, but it was first prayed publicly by Mother Teresa in 1981. Please join me in prayer. Lord, lead us from death to life, from falsehood to truth. Lead us from despair to hope, from fear to trust. Let peace fill our hearts, our world, and our universe. Let us dream together, pray together, and work together to build one world of peace and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Legrand. As we gather here today, we reflect-- please be seated. As we gather here today, we reflect not only on the terrible loss of September 11th, 2001, but also on the extraordinary strength we found as a community and a nation in the days that followed. In the face of unimaginable tragedy, we witnessed the very best of American spirit. We saw neighbors helping neighbors, strangers standing shoulder to shoulder, and communities across this nation coming together, united by grief, but also by an unwavering resolve to heal and to move forward. We remember the courage of those who ran toward danger so that others might live, our firefighters, police officers, EMTs, and so many others. Their sacrifice reminds us of the words in Scripture in John 15:13, "Greater love hath no man than this, that a man lay down his life for his friends." That love, that courage, and that sense of duty continue to inspire us today. And I'm going to go off my prepared remarks for just a second because, as I was thinking about this this morning, we talk about unity and the way we came together and stood in the face of violence almost a quarter century ago. Yesterday, we had another leader, activist, conservative leader that was assassinated. We had attempts on the-- we had assassinations in Minnesota earlier this year on Democratic representatives. Two legislator that lost her life and her husband, another that nearly passed. And last year, assassination attempts on the former President of the United States, multiple. So I just wanted to editorialize off what I had prepared this morning for a moment and say that that unity that we had on September 11th, we've fallen away from it in quite a significant way. Where we came together against violence, we now seem so quick to turn to it as a solution. And I just ask that, in light of all that, we try to remember that unity that we had on the 12th and get back to that. But that love, that courage, and that sense of duty continues to inspire us today. It calls us to set aside our differences and stand united, committed to service, to compassion, and to one another. As we honor those lost and those who gave everything to save others, let us also recommit ourselves to the ideals that make our nation strong: faith, hope, resilience, and community. At this time, I'd like to invite our Vice Chair, Dan Burrow, to read today's proclamation.
Thank you, Chair Green. Thank you, the color guard, for being here today as well. As they're walking past me, it was hard not to get choked up a little bit. I mean, it's, again, very-- all very prideful and proud of where we're from and the United States. Whereas, on the-- on this anniversary of September 11th, 2001, the Kent County Board of Commissioners joins Americans across the nation in remembering and honoring the nearly 3,000 innocent lives lost in the horrific terrorist attacks on that day. And whereas, we recognize and honor the courage of the emergency responders, police officers, firefighters, and EMTs who ran toward danger to save lives, many making the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. And whereas, we honor the U.S. military, service members who answered the call on and after 9/11, taking up the fight against terrorism and enduring great sacrifice in the defense of our freedoms. And whereas, the events of September 11th tested the strength, resilience, and unity of the American people, reaffirming the enduring truth of the words in our national anthem, "The land of the free and the home of the brave." And whereas, we remain steadfast in our resolve to prevent future acts of terrorism, we are grateful to the men and women of our armed forces who continue to protect and defend our nation from the threats, both foreign and domestic. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Kent County Board of Commissioners solemnly remembers the lives lost, honors the heroism of first responders, and expresses profound gratitude to the members of our military and emergency services. Today and every day, we thank those who serve and protect our West Michigan communities with dedication and sacrifice.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burrow. Ladies and gentlemen, I ask that you now please rise and join us in a moment of silence as we remember the nearly 3,000 lives Thank you. Please be seated. As we conclude this commemoration, let us carry forward the spirit of unity, courage, and compassion that defined us on September 11th and the days that followed. May we continue to honor the memory of those we lost by living lives of service, strengthening the bonds of our community, and standing together as one people. On behalf of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, I'd like to thank you all for joining us in this remembrance. All right. I'd also like to thank the Sheriff's Department, the Honor Guard, and the Grand Rapids Police Pipe Band for assisting us in our ceremony today. Thank you. Okay. We will now move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is public comment related only to Agenda Items-- Agenda Action Items. Please give your name and address and the Agenda item you're speaking to, and you have up to three minutes. Good morning.
First off, I want to give my condolences to the people that lost their lives at 9/11. It was a very tragic situation. And I hope that we can stick together. Ben, I like what you said about unity and being able to stick together and that you actually spoke on Democratic leaders that also lost their lives, too. That's very genuine of you to speak on that because a lot of Republicans ignore that. But I'm here to speak on Agenda Item G, which is the State Economic Department of Labor Opportunity, LEO, Regional Community Collaborative Grant. And so I know that you guys are getting a grant to basically be able to help out the community, the region. And I've been advocating continuously for esports and tech as LinkedIn has named our city as the number-one city on the rise. And so I'm asking you guys, once these opportunities come for you guys to legislate and speak on these opportunities and advocate to get grant funding, that we can use some of these grant funders to support tech and innovation across our community. As you guys know, I'm helping bring the largest esports event in the state of Michigan, but also one of the largest in the United States. And we need our economy to grow. We need innovation. We need it to grow equitably. We need it to grow equally. And I believe every student should have access and opportunity regardless of their background. And so I'm going to continuously keep advocating as I know that this does align because this is the regional championship. This is the regional finals for the students across our school district to be able to go to the state championship. And the cool thing about this cool opportunity is not just bringing it to the devos place, not just showing people how powerful education can be and why they need to-- why people need to invest into education. Our federal government and our state government and our county and our city and our school district needs to invest in the education, but also just bringing a sense of community, something that we really don't have across here. I know y'all got y'all welcome plan and y'all welcome event. I won't be able to go to that event or bring my esports activation probably next year, but it's times that I didn't feel welcome around Kent County, believe it or not. But I just really want you guys just to continuously advocate for innovation and technology and understanding that these esports competitions that I'm doing, it's going to be huge. I have a handout, and it still aligns with what I'm speaking on, but the esports-- I mean, the streaming platform that is going to be utilized as the Michigan High School Esports Federation is going to be used in the organization party, which is on the blockchain as Donald Trump is using the blockchain, too, with this Truth Social. They're actually going to be sponsoring the esports finals at the devos place, and they're based in Dubai. So they're investing into the community, directly into the community, and the coaches and staff don't get paid. So I believe that our city and our county can also advocate to be able to invest in the tech and innovation so we can advance our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment related to Agenda Action Items only? Good morning. Please give us your name and address and the item you're speaking on. You have up to three minutes.
My name is Shannon Tannis, and I'm displaced in Kent County. I would like to also speak on the regional grant aspect. I wear many different hats. I am an ambassador for this area for Crime Survivors for Safety and Justice. We already have a trauma center in Detroit. We're looking at having a trauma center here in Grand Rapids, and what that does is get victims of crimes access to therapy and specialized therapy, victim compensation, and also elevates and raise their voices to be able to be heard by the impact that they have experienced. We also do reform and legislation advocacy and change. So I would ask that you look at some of that grant funding to be allocated to some of that type of service in the future. I also am a beta tester for the new Community Connect 2.0 for the housing system and the stakeholders in Kent County. It's a dual-integration system to include the HMIS system and the stakeholders. Through my lived experience and looking at things, I became aware that stakeholders were only using their own systems and not using the HMIS system. So those who were homeless were not really being counted, and they were being denied access. And it was creating a monopoly to block the people that are homeless. So through my advocacy, this was-- has been in the works for several years now, and they're looking at having it available for everyone in the fall. So I also would advocate for those technology because of the fact that it's missing in housing. The IT aspect for collecting data and providing these type of technology services is very minimum within the housing system. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment related to Agenda Action Items only? Okay, I see none. We will move on to Agenda Item Number Six, the Consent Agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Legrand. Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Questions, comments, or discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, Commissioners Morse.
Yes.
Merchant. DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Steck. Ponstein. Vice Chair Burrow.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman. Halsted. Teal.
Yes.
Sparks. McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy. Oliver King. Legrand.
Yes.
Womack. Faber. Pakla.
Yes.
Morales. Boujack. Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen yes, zero nays. The motion passes. The Consent Agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Seven. I'd like to say, Commissioners, that we have a number of resolutions to get through this morning. Certainly, you are, as always, welcome to ask questions and have your comments heard, but we do have an important work session we'd like to get to today. We have some Commissioners that need to leave early, so I'm going to try to move through these with relative deliberate action. So let's try to keep that in mind. Thank you. With that, I will call on Commissioner Steck for 7A.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move approval of Resolution 66 at today's date, which calls for the appropriation of additional $50,000 to the Fiscal Year 2025 Register of Deeds Automation Fund.
Thank you. Supported by Vice Chair Burrow. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? I see none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Resolution is adopted. We move to Item 7B, and I will again call on Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green, again. I move approval of Resolution 67 at today's date, which calls for approval of tax sharing agreement between Kent County and Byron Township.
Thank you. I thought you were going to read the entire thing. I appreciate your swiftness on that. Yes. It was rare for you, Commissioner. The brevity is-- supported by Commissioner Hildenbrand. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? Yes, Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Green. So I think over my tenure in this seat, I think I've been pretty consistent on my dislike for DDAs and increment financing districts. And, you know, we keep hearing that, you know, county governments, local governments don't have enough money, but yet we seem to have money to lock up money that taxpayers thought was going to the county, and we are now going to be letting those funds be part of a street corridor improvement authority. And we're justifying it because somehow we're going to get a tax share portion, which is normally a far smaller portion than what they're taking. So just wanted to make my point before the vote.
Thank you. Heard and received. Thank you. Commissioner Faber.
Just had a couple clarifying questions, and I know folks from Byron Center are here, but a question about the governance of the CIA. Is this a separate board or is it the township that oversees the CIA? And then a question about what these funds are actually being used for. Usually corridor improvement areas are primarily dealing with physical improvements. The report or the plan that I see is primarily events. When I went on the website of the township, I only saw one report that shows a contribution to Tanger Outlet Mall. I just want to make sure we're not-- we're not maximizing the use of these funds in terms of actual capital improvement in the area.
My understanding is CIA's are appointed by the local government but are independent. Josh, it sounds like you can clarify on that.
Yeah. It does have its own board, separate from the township board. And any more detail than that, I can call Peggy Sattler from Byron Township. Clerk is here. And it is more promotional-type activities that are in the proposal. It has always been a gray area, but that is currently considered to be eligible use of funds if it was actual tax-- in this case, it's a tax sharing agreement, so it's kind of outside of the authority, you know, act. But even if it was, it would be eligible. So I guess any more about that, I can call Peggy up to answer. But it is more promotional-type events-type.
Well, I guess just as a follow-up, there was reference to a development plan. So we've done 10 years. We're adding 10 years. Is there an actual development plan document that has specific goals? Is that available to us in the future?
We can send that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief. Josh, can you remind me, do we have a formal process in place for consideration of tax sharing agreements like this? Do we have any examples of other tax sharing agreements that we could share with the board? I mean, I'm just trying to understand what's the precedent for doing this? Are we renewing it because it has existed in the past? Or are we renewing it because we have a process in place for it?
So this is following our economic development policy that the board approved. It's been some time ago since it's been kind of looked at. But where, when an authority comes up, and when it's initially established, we have the option to opt out, and we do that as a county. But in that policy, there are conditions under which we'd then enter into a tax sharing agreement so that the authority can capture the increment of the county's taxes. Now, they're not like tight, I guess, guidance on that process, but like Ada Township, for instance, where their downtown-- we have a tax sharing agreement with them. Downtown Grand Rapids is separate, is different than that. They're actually sharing back revenue, even though they don't have to. But that is our current policy. A lot of the authorities were created, though, before that policy was in place, so it's not used a lot, but it would be used for more-- for newer authorities currently. I know there's talk about revisiting that policy overall and how we approach these things, but yeah.
And a very brief follow-up, if I might, Mr. Chair. We're not resetting the increment baseline, are we? Or it's--
We are not right now, but that's something that we're looking at, maybe as we revisit the policy on how we do that.
Great, thank you.
Administrator Vandenberg had a couple comments.
Yeah, just to create maybe a little bit greater setting for this, the county pretty much allowed all uses of tax increment financing until about 2009 or '10, and after the Great Recession hit, did an evaluation of all the money that was being captured and some of it being tied up long-term. And so at that point, the new policy became to opt out of those agreements unless a separate agreement was reached. And so there are a handful of those. And the unique one with the Grand Rapids DDA is that there's actually a revenue sharing agreement that kicks in additional percentages as the years pass. So I did have staff put together a comprehensive report on all the uses of TIF in the county. We're reviewing that policy. We do plan to have a discussion with the Finance Committee and ultimately the board over whether we should have better middle ground established. I mean, for us, I'm a glasses-half-full kind of person, and so I believe that if we do approve some of these, there will be a greater amount that comes back to the county. It just has to be in our lifetimes. And so that was my biggest criticism of these agreements is they go on so long. I mean, one I saw in one West Michigan community, not in Kent County, was a 57-year return on the general fund. And so I think we need to find that middle ground to help growth happen, but make sure it's not out there so much that the general fund doesn't get money back.
Anyone else? Okay, I see none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, and the resolution is adopted. We'll move on to Item 7C, and I will call on Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 68 up to today's date from the Area Agency on Aging of West Michigan, the appropriation for senior center staffing from Community Action.
Thank you. Supported by Commissioner Womack. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? I see none. This is, again, a voice vote. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Move on to Agenda Item 7D, and I will again call on Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 69 up to today's date, accepting the funding from the Kent County Parks Foundation for the Millennium Park Entry Sign and Landscaping coming to us from Parks and Rec.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? I see none. I see none. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 69, Commissioners Morse.
Yes.
Merchant. DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman. Halsted.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 69er is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will move to Agenda Item 7F, and I will call, or 7E, rather, and I will call on Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move approval of Resolution Number 70, up to today's date, which calls for the approval of a purchase of a residential parcel within Millennium Park for the expansion of the park.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? I see none. This is, again, a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 70, Commissioners Morse.
Yes.
Merchant. DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman. Halsted.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 70 is adopted.
Thank you. We will move to Agenda Item 7F, and I will again call on Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 71, up to today's date, for the West Michigan Welcome Plan donations coming to us from the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Pakla. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? Yes, Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Green. I want to thank all the people and businesses that donated to make this possible. I guess the problem I have isn't the donations or what it's going to be used for, but whether this is a role for county government to be involved with. I've thought about this over the past couple months when the Welcome Plan, you know, started up, is, you know, on the way in, I heard we're local first, it's got a big community event, we've got chambers of commerce that cover a lot of different things, and like I said, I'm supportive of the donations that came in and hopeful to see what happens, but I still have a bigger, greater question, whether this is a role of our government, and is there someone else that can do the same thing that they're already doing and just expand it? So thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Okay, I see none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries and the resolution is adopted. Thank you. We will move to Agenda Item 7G, and I will again call on Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 72, up to today's date, the State of Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity Regional Community Collaborative Grant coming to us from the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Pakla. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? Yes, Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Commissioner Chair. Two brief questions. One was brought up a little bit in public comment. Al, can we get a little more information at some point in time on this RCC Economic Development Plan that has some grant funds associated with it? I see that the grant is intended to update that plan, but I don't know that I've ever seen the original plan. I think it'd be really useful from a...
Sure. Yeah, Jenny can give you a brief update on that.
Great.
Yes, in 2025, Kent County was a pilot for this economic development component, and we held an event in August that brought together employers and folks looking for employment and folks from education to talk about employment and labor force and bringing more people into jobs here in Kent County. And this will be the second year of it, so we'll get you information about what happened last year, and then it's part of the strategic plan for all this RCC work in 2026.
Great, I appreciate that. The other question I had is I noticed that there was a line item for translation services. This is my opportunity to make a plug for some county operating support in translation services in a broad sense. You know, we had $12,000 of this grant that is going towards specific translation services. I think it's really good if we can operationalize some of that so that we can use those grant dollars for other programmatic needs.
Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Green. So, you know, here we go. We have the State of Michigan that doesn't have a budget complaining they don't have enough money. We need money for this, this, and that, yet, and I'm sure we're not the only one that got this money, but 225,000 from the State of Michigan to fund this program. And once again, to the greater question is, is this the role of, you know, county government? I would think business associations and groups all across the county could do a far much better job, but until the State of Michigan get their financial house in order, I think receiving this money is just kind of a slap in the face to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Okay, I see none. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 72, Commissioners Morse.
Yes.
Merchant. DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman. Halsted.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 ayes, one nay. The motion passes. Resolution 72 is adopted.
Thank you. We will move to Agenda Item 7H, and I will again call on Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 73, up to today's date, the Winter 2025 Dedicated Millage Property Tax Levy coming to us from the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. Given that we're discussing taxes, I think it's important that we make some comment about these taxes that are going to be most likely approved today. Commissioner Hildebrand during our budget session indicated that the constituents in his district are very concerned about taxes, most likely will not be using the services offered by the county, and the same would be true for the rural residents in my district. I think it's also important to note that many of these millages that are included in this winter dedicated millage are voter-approved. So the senior services, the veteran services, the zoo museum, and the Ready By Five, these are all actions that were taken by the voters, and these are millages that we, as commissioners, don't have any discretion on. But I would like to comment on the Point 7417 operating and debt services. We could cut that millage. We probably should talk about what we can do to try to find ways to do more with less at the county, but in doing so, we would probably have to cut services, and nobody likes to see services go away. So we have a situation where we have an ever-expanding county government, and I just want the commissioners to keep in mind that of all the millages that are included in this tax approval for winter, that there is one place where we can, as commissioners, make a difference. And, you know, I'd like to see in the future some discussion about possibly reducing that Point 7417 millage, if possible. And so it would be easy to just vote yes today and kind of let this go without making any comments, but I did feel that for the voters out there or the constituents out there that are concerned about taxes, that we are, you know, looking at these things and we are having these discussions, and we do take seriously, you know, this Point 7417. And I would also like to comment that I think that our government here at the county does do a very good job of being fiscally prudent with those tax dollars. So we do try to be cognizant of the spending that we approve, but I think we should consider, you know, finding ways to do better and maybe even cut that millage. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Al, I was just making sure I understood exactly what was happening with headly rollbacks here. So the early childhood millage we reapproved last year, the voters approved it, we reapproved it at 0.25, but it was rolled back already, even though it was never levied at 0.25. Just wanted to make sure that I understood that was the right timing of everything?
Yes.
Okay. And was there a different timing that would have had it levy at 0.25? That might be a bigger question for a different day, but I just want, the first part of the question was...
I'll ponder that and make sure we answer correctly and get it out to the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? Okay, I see none. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 73, Commissioners Morse.
Yes.
Merchant. DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman. Halsted. Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 73 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 7I, and I will call on Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. I move Resolution 74, for fiscal year 2026, Unneed Needs Funding allocations, a recommendation of the local Department of Health and Human Services Board to us and coming to us from the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner LeGrand. Questions, comments, or discussions on this item? I see none. This is, again, a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 74, Commissioners Morse.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman. Halsted. Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 73 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 7I, and I will call on Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. I move Resolution 74, for fiscal year 2026, Unneed Needs Funding allocations, a recommendation of the local Department of Health and Human Services Board to us and coming to us from the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner LeGrand. Questions, comments, or discussions on this item? I see none. This is, again, a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 74, Commissioners Morse.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman. Halsted. Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 74 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We move to Item 7J, and I will call on Vice Chair Burl.
Thank you, Chair Green. In a partial defense of my profession, I will note that in each of these cases, it is the court that determines the compensation to the attorneys.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. This is, again, a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 75, Commissioners Morse.
Yes.
Merchant. DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
I'm just keeping you all on your toes today.
I've left her Ponstein the last couple times.
Commissioners Coleman. Halsted.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Morales. Boujack. Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen yeas, one nay. The motion passes. Resolution seventy-five is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll move to item seven K, and if he's not too quick, we'll call on Vice Chair Burl again.
All right, I'll slow this down. I move Resolution seventy-six of today's date opioid settlement, eight manufacturer distributor defendants brought to us by the Administrator's Office.
Thank you, sir's support. Supported by a slew of folks over here. We'll go with Minority Vice Chair McLeod. Questions, comments, or discussions on this item? Yes, Commissioner Womack.
When it comes to the opioid epidemic, I just hope that oversight with some of this funding that's coming in through these lawsuits will really be used to save some lives, and it's not something where money is just dished out there without anybody looking to see what is the return on investment, not financially, but when it comes to saving lives of people. I have some podcasts that I've been helping produce by young people in the community, and it's very shocking that two things that rose to the tops are vapes that they see being used in school. I learned from one podcast that they're able, and not that that has to do with opiates, that there are even electronic watches that their parents don't know that they can vape from, and just seeing how they're targeting children, but opioids also came to the top, and it, and it just was an in-depth discussion that keeps coming up, and just to have young people in high school who already have friends who have overdosed, so just hoping that we really keep a track of that and make sure that it's some impact to what I'm finding out is a deeper underworld than even what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Administrator Vanderberg said he had fifteen to twenty seconds.
Yeah, it's very quickly.
He said that, I'm not putting a restraint on him.
Use of these funds will be governed through the opioid report, task force report that's been done, approved by the Board of Commissioners. As more settlements come in, that plan undergoes a frequent review, and so there is a structure around it. I, I believe the dollars are being put to good use, a fair amount of it right in our own jail, you know, treating, you know, real life, now happening sorts of, of situations in real time, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. Just to follow up on that, we approved an allocation plan for two years, I think, so when you say we'll be subject to review, it's at the end of that first two-year period of time?
Yes, the opioid task force and county departments are going to be convening starting in January to prepare the next round of recommendations that will come to the board for review and approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to voice my support for the work that has been done with this settlement money, particularly the work in the jail is a great example where we are actually able to provide a significant step in treatment, and we are seeing results in reduced recidivism from some of these people. I also just want to point out that in the version of the budget that came out of the State House, that state support for SUD treatment has just been absolutely axed. We did a line-by-line look at that budget in our Network 180 meeting. So, since Network 180 oversees a lot of substance use disorder treatment in the county, you know, that's, it's going to hit very hard if, if those are passed, so I'm glad for this money to continue doing this good work, especially with the potential loss going forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? I try not to weigh in too much on these, but I would like to say I agree with the spirit of Commissioner Ponstein's statement, that this feels like a pittance compared to the impact of these drugs on people's lives, but look forward to what we can do here locally to try to right the ship on this, on this epidemic. All right. With that, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution seventy-six, Commissioners Morse. Merchant. DeBoer. Hildenbrand. Steck. Ponstein. Vice Chair Burl. Commissioners Coleman. Halsted. Teal. Sparks. McLeod. Hennessy. Oliver King. Legrand. Womack. Faber. Pakla. Morales. Boujack. Chair Green. Mr. Chair, you have eighteen yeas, one nay. The motion passes. Resolution seventy-six is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will move to agenda item number eight, which is public comment related to general county matters. Please give us your name and address, and you have up to three minutes. Welcome back, Dee.
How y'all, how y'all doing? I'm Dee Jones, so I wanted to speak to y'all a couple of things. Got this big goal and vision of changing the financial banking system to decentralized currency and the blockchain, and so I got some cool things going on because I know the Rothschilds and the Rockefellers have shaped the American government into what it is, and the banking system that they created is over other countries. They've invaded other countries, they took in their resources just to put them under their financial banking system. Our country is enslaved to these people. The Federal Reserve is a, is a private company, it's not even a part of the federal government, it's owned by the Rothschilds and the Rockefellers. For some reason, though, people don't stand up and speak out about this because our country is suffering, as genocide being, happening across the country. Benjamin Netanyahu is continuously bombing other countries. He's continuously bombing, he just bombed Qatar and Doha, and people don't speak out about these things. These things are wrong. These things are inhuman, and people need to speak out to Republicans, Democrats, be strong and be bold, because I got a lot to lose too. I know I'm not a politician, I ain't run for office, but I got a lot to lose too. I got loved ones, I got nieces, I got nephews, I got friends, I got a community that loves me too, but I use my voice. I like, I like to go home and go to sleep peacefully too, but I use my voice to stand up and be strong for the people because I know that there's leaders that need to be stepping up, so one day I am going to change those things, but not alone. So I wanted to speak to you guys about this organization, Party, so I'm verified on the platform X, the platform that Elon, the second richest person because Richard Ellison just passed him, and then the platform Party, the same platform on the blockchain, they're going to be sponsored in Michigan High School Esports Regional Finals at the DeVos Place. And then a couple of days ago on Tuesday, President Donald Trump, he has the True Social, a blockchain platform where cryptocurrency is utilized. He has something called gems that people you get, and they can, they can convert those gems by, you know, being active on his platform. Just the same concept with the same concept with Party, where you earn Party points that could be converted into cryptocurrency. Except for us, we're going to be able to offer this equitably and equally across our community to the students, to the community, to everyone across the globe, across the United States, the schools, the United Nations. And so the same point system and concept that Donald Trump is using was already utilized in this point system that I've been speaking to you about, the streaming platform, and then I'll be speaking at the Michigan Computer Science Conference in the City of Lansing on September twenty-third, so I'll be educating institutions and governments how computer science and how esports and gaming can build digital equity for students and across our nation, so I don't want you guys to, don't snort, use your voice, because I'm gonna keep using my voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment related to general county matters? Welcome back. Please give us your name and address again for the record. Thank you.
Shannon Tanis, displaced in Kent County. I come before you because I've been engaging this board about the Department of Health and Human Services, and I may brought it to Laura's attention about them being in violation for six weeks with their September seventeenth meeting. I asked to be notified if the meeting was going to be changed. I was not notified, but thanks to my divine spiritual discernment and intuition, I looked at the county website and realized, oh, it was yesterday morning, and I attended it. I was highly concerned about it being on the third floor and it being locked, and I needed a security escort. That is completely against open meetings. Then it just seemed like the board kind of put something together to have, to be able to look like they were doing official business and giving some information, but what was also disturbing is that Susan came over to talk to me after the meeting was adjourned, and the clerk secretary, Maria Banfield, came over and rudely interrupted us and proceeded to kick me out of the meeting, citing that they, the security was short-staffed and, and that I had to leave. That is also not in good standing with the ability to redress and talk to our representatives before and after meeting, public meetings, so that way we can have candid conversations about official business. I also brought to the attention that there was not anything in the summary, agenda citing anything they talked about. There were no reports or any of that transparency, which I've been asking for. I recorded the car, the, the meeting, I sent it to a few of you and regards to this, but if this is any indication of the conduct and, and behavior that's going to be going on in the future to address these issues, it's, it's very discouraging to see, and, and I, I just want to provide some avenue of remedy. As someone that was impacted from a loved one that had opiate addiction, and I had them flagged at the hospital when I became a caretaker, public guardian of them having addiction issue. My mother was put into public guardianship and put underneath the PACE program, and those doctors and facilities overrode the fact that I had my mother flagged for those types of addiction issues and put her right back on those opiates. So for you guys to be getting settlements and then pushing it right back to the same people that were in the position to protect those people and not allow this to happen, it's just kind of really a smack in the face.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments? Good morning. Please give us your name and address. You have up to three minutes.
Emma Garcia, Fifty Valley Avenue, neighbor of John Ball Park, previously a Mayoral Lee-appointed member of the City of Grand Rapids Master Plan Steering Commission. Since the approval of the zoo's master plan in December, the advisory committee comprised of zoo, county, and neighbors has met every six weeks with a charge that states that input from the advisory committee will inform guidance that the administrator provides to the John Ball Zoo to positively impact area residents. I would like to thank Al and Josh for their commitment of time and energy to this committee, as well as Josh's tireless patience in responding to the concerns and challenges that have arisen this year. Thank you. As you will recall, under the current operating agreement between the zoo and the county created in 2013, section 2.2.6 states that the zoo will maintain and operate the public park in a manner reasonably designed as to not create or cause complaints from neighboring property owners or occupants, and in a manner substantially similar to the standards of public access and/or use for a park with similar amenities operated by the Kent County Parks Department. Unfortunately, 2025 has not been a year without complaints. A theme of neighborhood concern has been the threat to public access space based on differing interpretations of the amendments as laid out in the zoo's approved master plan. It has become clear that a more formal agreement with clarification on approval processes, timelines, and proactive communication is needed to protect public use assets that are needlessly in threat of being permanently lost. We are asking that the commission consider the commitment to update the operating agreement, as well as our request for a community benefits agreement with the zoo, and alignment with county and city plans that guide public park maintenance and investment. While John Ball Park, one of the oldest parks in Grand Rapids, has been reduced to a buffer zone, neighbors yet dearly love this space. While remains of the green space, tree groves, pond and wooded trails can be preserved, restored, and can become a safe and thriving space that is an amenity both to zoo patrons as well as to neighbors. We believe there's a win-win embedded in a vision of a highly attractive park, and we need the continued support of the county on behalf of the thousands of residents that rely on the park for free access to health, recreation, and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment this morning? Good morning. Please give us your name and address. You have up to three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Siri Levikas. My address is thirty-six forty-two Newcastle Drive, Southeast Grand Rapids, Michigan. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. I'm here on behalf of my son, who is a resident at a facility, healthcare facility, and has a guardian. He is not being able to enjoy the same benefits that many of you are enjoying with your loved ones that are in a healthcare facility. You're able to go to doctor's appointments with them, you're able to visit them whenever you want, you're able to have other friends and family members come, they're able to be a part of your celebrations at home. My son, by his guardian, is isolated. He is not even allowed a visit from his pastor. I am not allowed to know any of his medical information, let alone support him and, and bond with him as we go together to his appointments or to receive medical treatment. I recently was able to find out that he had a bed sore for over a year. The law requires that if he has a bed sore in a facility for over three months, he is placed in a wound program, and this did not happen. He was suffering with a deep wound. I only found out about it because the healthcare person mentioned that she didn't have him up for my one-hour visit once a week, that, that she didn't want to get him up before I was going to be there, and she said that the wound had gotten much worse. She's afloat, so she doesn't go all the time, and, and she was very concerned that they hadn't had treatment. Because I found out this information, I was able to file a complaint with Laura, who got back with us within twenty-four hours, and he had a bed specifically designed to heal bed sore wounds within twenty-four hours, but this only happened because this healthcare giver told me what was going on with my son. I am not allowed, per the guardian, to go to his team care meetings because of efficiency and, and use of time, but if I have any concerns, which how would I know if I have any concerns if I'm not at his health team meetings to find out what the concerns are? My son needs your help.
Thank you.
In being able to receive.
Thank you.
Access to visitors and to healthcare. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment related to general matters? Okay, I see none. We will move on to the item number nine, which is the Administrator's Report.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things this morning. I did want to introduce Scott Sandin to the board. Scott saw the light and made the move from Grand Rapids, where he was deputy CFO, to Kent County, where he's deputy fiscal services director. Welcome, Scott. You'll be seeing a lot of him in the future as we work on budgets and other finance-related issues. Secondly, just wanted to mention, I was moved by the ceremony this morning when nine-one-one happened. I first learned of it, my first time here, walking from the front desk back to my office back here, and the next two days, then-county Administrator Darryl Delabio and I were cloistered with law enforcement officials from Kent County, Grand Rapids, and others for two straight days, trying to figure out what's next and how can the community best be protected. Jerry Clayman, who I see in the audience this morning, was county commissioner at that time, so, yeah, just, that's it.
Thank you, Al. Welcome, Scott. Welcome aboard, and welcome back. Former Commissioner Clayman, although you were, you've had many titles since, much greater and bigger titles than that. Welcome back. Okay, we'll move to agenda item number ten, which is reports. Any commissioners with reports today? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. Want to report on developments at Network 180 board that's passed this week, excuse me. We did, at the board approve a balanced budget for the next fiscal year. Commissioners Legrand, Faber, and Halsted joined me at that meeting. The, the budget is balanced, and that seems like that's natural, but it's a huge challenge, that Network 180, to have a balanced budget, and it did not come without significant amount of pain in, in reducing some of our reimbursement rates to providers. The past few years, it has not been balanced. We've had significant losses, meaning that the costs of the services mandated by the state exceeded the allocated Medicaid funds in the tune of eleven to fourteen million dollars in the current year, so this system can't continue to do that, and it compelled us to, to take the hard steps to balance this budget. Clearly going into this next year with the complete redesign of the system, as many of you now know, we are facing, along with some of the challenges at both the state and the federal level, the absolute necessity to balance that budget, as painful as it was, was present, and so we will see what this next coming year looks like.
Thank you. Reports from any other commissioners this morning? I see none. Thank you. We will move to agenda item number eleven, which is miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous comments from commissioners this morning? Commissioner Halsted.
I'll give just a quick one. Our own West Michigan Whitecaps have done very well, and they're going to play this evening, and actually they're rated the number one winning team across all of Major League Baseball in the nation right now, so they've got the winningest season, however you want to say that, I'm not sportsy, but go Caps and go support them tonight.
The winningest record of any pro baseball team in the country, so congratulations to the Whitecaps. They're not in my district anymore, but I'm not, I'm totally over it, Commissioner Morse, so. Okay, anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Womack.
Yes, just want to thank you, Chair Green, for your presentation along with everybody else for nine-one-one, but specifically what you called for peace and unity when it comes to people with opposing views, the mentioning of the Democrats that were killed, that are elected officials, it definitely affects America. The shooting yesterday in Utah in front of those students of a person based upon their opinion, and ju- just, you know, watching social media and seeing some people applaud and support the violence, I just ask the rest of our colleagues here to continue to be voices for peace, as there's a lot going on federally in this country, but I hope locally, you know, I pray for our entire country, but I hope locally we can come together and continue to act for peace and keep Kent County and Michigan safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair. Last night, Chair Green and I had the privilege to attend the Mastodon opening at the Public Museum. I love the Public Museum, and I just thought it was a great, a great reminder that our community does have a significant amount of, of, of community feeling and of just a unity to each other, and I, given the, the circumstances that are, and the brokenness in our country right now, I just, I really appreciated that time, and I really appreciated just how the Public Museum has shown that this is a community and that we're there for each other regardless of party lines or different ethnicities or divisions that we may have, so I just wanted to, to share that we have a Mastodon opening. It was something that happened, you know, in West Michigan. Property owner, it was just a Mastodon, Mastodon bones were found on their property during a drainage project, and so just seeing the community come together and seeing that donated for the public and for our enjoyment, it was just something that really inspired me and reminded me that during this broken time, West Michigan still is a wonderful place to live, and we still can provide support to each other no matter those, those divisions, so that's all I wanted to share.
Thank you, Commissioner DeBoer. The Clapp family could have enriched themselves in a very big way from that and decided to give it to our community, so it's open today, go see it, it's fantastic. Anyone else? Okay, I'd just like to sort of echo Commissioner Womack's comments and just say that we're, we're shocked by the event yesterday and offer our prayers to the, the family and friends of Charlie Kirk. He may have been a divisive figure at times, but one thing that I noticed was always encouraging conversation and, and trying to be respectful to people and engage in debate, and for this type of thing to happen on a college campus where we should be testing our beliefs and, you know, working through that and becoming more critical thinkers, to see an act of violence like that is, is heartbreaking, and I mentioned earlier that, just cascading of all the others, so we just, I just want to say that my, my prayers are with all those affected, and I, I'll say what I said earlier, that let's just work to be ambassadors against that kind of, that kind of thing here locally, and do what we can from this group to push back against that, that rhetoric and that feeling. With that, we'll move on to agenda item twelve, which is adjournment. Oh, before we call on Commissioner Legrand, we're going to take a very short break, let's say quarter to ten, we'll come back for our work session. Commissioner Legrand.
It is my pleasure to move to adjourn such as to the call of the chair on Thursday, September twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, at three AM for an official meeting.
Thank you, sir's support. Supported by Commissioner Hildebrand. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, we'll see you in five minutes.